Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be calling our planning commission meeting for June twenty eighth to order at this time. Welcome, everyone. Uh, at this time, I'll ask for any public comments on any items not currently listed on our agenda. Anything anyone like to bring up? Okay, good, seeing none, then we'll move on to our first, uh, item, which is the adoption of the June fourteenth, two thousand ten minutes, and these are in draft form. Do I have any discussion, any concerns, issues?
I have no.
Comments?
No issues.
Okay, so, we want to, this is just a draft, is this actually a draft, or is these, are these gonna be the minutes we approve? These are the ones we approve, okay. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, June fourteenth, two thousand ten?
So moved, a second.
We have a motion, a second, on the floor, to approve the minutes, Tony?
Commissioner Gorman.
Hi.
Commissioner Kidwell.
Hi.
Commissioner Zan.
Hi.
Commissioner Lozawa.
Hi.
Commissioner Paul.
All abstained. Okay, we'll move on to the first, um, hearing, and that is CU ten dash zero one, and SP ten dash zero one. A condition of use, a site plan and design review application for Atkinson Memorial Church education building. Um, we have heard, uh, two different meetings now, we've taken all of the, uh, both the application, applicant's information, as well as all the, uh, staff reports, and, uh, any other information that was open to the public, and, uh, the, that was closed to, to any more comment. So this evening, we'll be, uh, bringing it up to the league commission, or the planning commission, for discussion and decision. Uh, I'm going to just ask one more time, uh, does anyone have, anyone on the board here have any, uh, conflict in interest, statements, or any items to declare?
No.
I don't know.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, nor do I. So, at this time, uh, with those staff-
Chair Powell, you were not present at the last meeting, but you did watch the video.
That is correct, I will say, I did watch the entirety of the video, all one hour and three minutes of it, and, uh, I did hear all, everything, and I also read every, all of the documentation, so I'm, I'm prepared to make a decision and discussion this evening. All right, do we have any staff comments, or?
Uh, briefly summarize, Chair Powell, uh, that we've prepared the revised staff report and recommendations for approval for the conditional use and site plan and design review application to relocate the educational activities for Atkinson Memorial Church, and the Oregon City preschool into a new education building, to be connected through a breezeway to the Atkinson Memorial Church. In your staff report, the revised signings include, uh, some additional exhibits, and, uh, those are the exhibits thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, which are the senior center parking lot email correspondence between staff. Exhibit thirty-six is an occupancy load table from the Oregon Structural Specialty Code. And, um, actually, exhibit, that's exhibit thirty-six, and exhibit thirty-five is a calculation of parking, um, uh, what the occupancy is for the actual edu- education wing. Uh, staff, revised staff report includes, uh, revised findings for compliance with the modification standards. The transparency on the building is, uh, been proposed to be moving closer to conformity than the existing building, that's one of the findings, and we find that the, uh, design modification is appropriate, uh, for the new ru- new wing. And the other design modification recommendation for approval is for the setback, uh, of the wing from, from the right-of-way. Uh, what we've done with respect to parking is prepared a, uh, with a table which is in front of you, and, uh, this was so we could summarize what's going on with the parking analysis that's been done for the new building. On the chart in front of you, the blue area is the analysis that we've done for the new building. Um, and that is broken out into midweek use and weekend use. Midweek uses proposed are the preschool, which would be from seven-thirty to three P M. And the analysis required for the code is to show that you have a minimum of two spaces, parking spaces, and a maximum of three parking spaces per thousand square feet. Therefore, for the preschool, the minimum number of spaces is, that is required is two, and that is what the applicant had proposed. We're also counting on-street parking toward, and meeting any off-street parking requirements. On-street parking per code is required to be twenty-two feet long of uninterrupted curb, abutting the subject land use. And the applicant has nineteen on-street parking spaces that they can use to fulfill their off-street parking requirements. The other, uh, midweek use activities in the new building consist of, uh, meetings and, um, various other, uh, education activities. Um, those are proposed generally after three P M. And meeting rooms and religious assembly is calculated based on a ratio of minimum of point two five spaces per seat, and a maximum of point five spaces per seat. Using the occupancy load from the commercial plans, uh, we ended up with a total number of occupant, of occupants in that building of seventy-nine, um, for the classrooms, the nursery, and the preschool. That means that there are minimum number of spaces required, twenty. They proposed twenty-one, which includes two off-street and nineteen on-street, and subsequently, that standard's met. Weekend use, which will be Sunday morning, is the religious assembly, um, in the, sorry, religious education uses, and that ratio, the ratio that they're required to show compliance was just point two five minimum, point five maximum. And, uh, for seventy-nine seats, they've met that requirement with, uh, twenty-one proposed spaces. We also evaluated the parsonage, which is the existing building, which would be used temporarily to house the preschool during the midweek, and, uh, that's required that two spaces, and there are nineteen on-street, on-street spaces which can fulfill that requirement until the new, new education building's built. Uh, and then they'll have two ADA spaces plus the nineteen on-street, on, on-street spaces. The administration uses for the church will be moving from the church basement, um, into the, uh, parsonage, and, uh, those requirements can be met with the twenty-one spaces provided. Uh, the existing church is not being evaluated. The documentation and analysis provided by the applicant during this review has shown that there's no enlargement or change to the, uh, church use on the Sunday religious surface, services. Um, that has been met by existing on and off-street parking, which is a pre-existing parking situation that's not being analyzed as part of this review. The religious education uses currently in the basement of the existing church were removed into the new space. Uh, so we're actually going from three thousand eight hundred eighty-five square feet in the basement to about two hundred, two thousand one hundred thirteen square feet in the new building. And so, those, those requirements have been met. And there will be some basement usage remaining, including storage, and I believe some, uh, existing meetings of a non-religious ma- nature, including, uh, Alcoholics Anonymous and some other activities in that basement. And, uh, so those are not expanding or changing, and so we're not looking at those. So, in summary, the parking requirements have been met, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about parking, uh, if I've not made that clear.
All right, any questions on this particular spreadsheet, or? You can answer?
Well, I, I have a question about the parking, actually, that, that was one of my concerns about this proposal, was that ninety percent of the required off-street parking is being provided as on-street parking. And, uh, I was curious what the, uh, verification of that, uh, weighting the requirement for off-street parking.
Right, in the staff report on page, uh, page thirteen of thirty-three of the staff report, which is page twenty in your full packet. Um, on-street parking is covered under section seventeen fifty-two oh-one-oh subsection D, which states that on-street parking for commercial uses, and we're evaluating this like a commercial use because it's in a mixed use corridor district. Um, the dimensional requirements are, um, the parallel parking, twenty-two feet of uninterrupted and available curb. So that has been met. Uh, then it says, parking may, as far as location, parking may be counted toward the minimum standards in the parking requirement table when it is on the block face, abutting the subject when in use. An on-street parking space must not obstruct, a required clear vision area, and it must not violate any law of street standard. The third requirement is that public use is required for credit, so these spaces that are on-street could not be marked as only for the use of the church. Uh, they have to be available for public use in order to count towards this off-street parking requirement. Um, and signs or other actions that limit general public use of on-street spaces are prohibited. So these spaces, while they are allowed to be credited for off-street parking purposes, do not, are not exclusively for the use of the church, they're in public use. And the idea there is to provide enough flexibility in our off-street parking requirements that we, um, cater to the, uh, shifting uses in our mixed-use district, um, as well as do not overpark the, um, the site with, uh, uses that only cover a, uh, portion of the time that they're proposed, you know, and those sorts, those sorts of things. And so we've found that they meet all those three standards.
Okay, can you hear other questions? Okay.
Actually, I, I have a question, I think that I've heard of that, now, just part of some of the, uh, those conditions.
Oh.
One and two's, right. I don't know if you wanna go over those, if you want me to just start my question, and, and.
Yeah, we've, uh, a couple of conditions of approval for your consideration, um, and the applicant wanted some clarification in the staff report on the, on these conditions as well. Um, throughout the staff report, we talked about there being no more than thirty-two participants, preschool participants at any one time. At your discretion, you may choose to place a cap on the use to ensure that there are no more than thirty-two. Uh, however, the occupancy load calculation that we did showed that you could ostensibly have more than thirty-two preschool participants and still have enough off-street, and still meet your off-street parking requirements. So, um, I'll leave that to your discretion.
And I guess, what, what would state law in terms of size and age, for the size of the space and the ages that are gonna be serving?
Right.
What does that say, I mean, in terms of the thirty-two? I know those numbers are signed, and what are those numbers?
Uh, I can ask the applicant to address that question, it has to do with state licensing of the preschool facility.
That's what I, that was came out of there, and, and they're already in state law, I really would condition it.
The situation would have us the record is closed, and we would have to reopen the record in order to get those facts. I think that the testimony has been that, under their current permit, they can only have thirty-two.
Okay.
So they'd have to get some kind of new state permission to have more than thirty-two.
And if this passed, it'd also have to come back to us for a, a very, it's like this.
They'd have to, they'd have to come back and we prove up adequate parking if they weren't having more students. Um, the thing about the preschool too, though, is that the parking requirement, as I understand it, is triggered to the size of the building, not this number of students, right? So if you look at the, uh, chart that he passed out, preschool is two minimum, three maximum per thousand square feet. So even if they could, under the occupancy, put more students in, then trigger more parking.
Okay. And I think that we've heard it is the case that the nature of the, of the transportation, um, is that we have people driving, to the, to the preschool, dropping people off, and then the cars drive away, we don't see a lot of parking around there, and, and in fact, you know, when I've driven by the place during school hours, there's plenty of parking, so. It, it seems to me that it's not a parking issue during school hours.
I, I just thought it was an interesting condition, just putting it down there, other areas seem like infected, but that, that was my lesser question, my other question was about number two, and, and we're putting a condition of use on the church. If I understand this correctly, and the church, really, I thought was out of the scope of this application. And I wanna put that yet again, it feels like we're adding something that doesn't need to be there.
Well, I, I think that the, uh, the staff has offered these for our consideration, and that's the discussion we're to have, whether or not we would agree to keep, uh, uh, keep conditions of approval, number one and number two, in, in the conditions of approval. So we haven't had that discussion yet, right?
Well, and that's why, that's why, what their thought was, you know?
So you make a good point about it being in church, which is not part of the application.
Right, I think that the reason why we proposed it was the idea that the church could continue to use the basement theoretically for classrooms, and then their classroom sites would double.
We've moved them over to the other buildings, and now what goes downstairs, we, you know, we have a double use going on, we gotta watch out for that, you know, that's exactly the point.
Oh, I understand that, I just wanna watch our bounds, but. I, I would, and then last question, I guess, would that kick out some of the non-educational, the other, other activities that are in there that doesn't sound like necessarily associated with religious education? But with that condition, would that kick those organizations out of the basement of the church where they currently use? I think they currently use.
Um, well, I think the applicant in their rebuttal letter has requested that the condition number two be revised to state, um, uh, non-religious education activities, so that you could still have alcoholics, monks, meetings, and things of that nature in the basement. So no, it would not if we made that revision.
Okay, those are my questions.
Um, the applicant has proposed a rebuttal letter, which was sent to you and sent to the, uh, everyone who testified. Um, and, uh, in that rebuttal letter, they had some clarifications that they requested in the staff report. Uh, staff thinks all of those clarifications are appropriate, and, uh, would be happy to make, make those if the commission agrees.
Okay. Okay, who'd like to, uh, start the discussion?
Yeah, I, I would just, um, to begin, say that I, I don't think I would support, um, the, uh, the condition of approval number one, that is to cap, uh, the number of students. Um, just because of the, uh, the, uh, chart that was presented to us today, that the, uh, parking requirements are based on square footage, you know, the number of students, so. Um, I don't, I don't really think that it's, that it's incumbent upon us to, uh, require that as a condition of approval.
Other discussion items?
I, I have, I think I'd be inclined the same, I mean, it seems like an extra step thrown in, and I understand sort of the need and the thought behind it, but, I, I don't know, I feel like we need it, and then, I would just support the non, the addition of the, the, uh, the rebuttal language of the non-religious activities, uh, for condition number two, if we're looking for, in fact, going to condition the church use at all in this, in this application.
I would agree with that.
All right. Any other questions?
Well, I, I have, um, as I reviewed the applicant's, uh, information, uh, three areas of concern. Uh, one was the use of the building as proposed, uh, two was the, uh, parking impact, and three, uh, is the architectural style related to the historic district. Uh, I feel that the, uh, use as proposed is appropriate, it's really, uh, an extension of the existing use, and so I, I would, uh, support the use as proposed. Uh, I have a concern about the parking, and I, I do believe that, uh, condition number two that the planning, uh, uh, department has proposed, uh, does go to address that, and I would support, uh, some version of, uh, condition number two. Uh, and exactly the point that you made is that without a restriction, there's the potential that you're getting, uh, whatever the use square footage is doubled, uh, you know, compared to the education use. So it seems that, uh, some form of, uh, condition number two would be appropriate to assert the use on the basement, uh, space, uh, so that you won't have that potential of creating a, a parking issue. Uh, the third area that I am a concerned about really is, is my, my biggest concern is the architectural style. And, uh, you know, I, I've looked at the, uh, requirements of the historic, uh, district, uh, as it relates to this building, and, uh, I, I'm an architect, and I've done, uh, a number of historic buildings in the past, and the, the thing that strikes me that, uh, any, uh, building is that it needs to belong in a place where it's proposed to go, uh, and, uh, this neighborhood has a particular style about it, uh, historic style, and, and that's why it was designated as a historic district. Um, the predominant, um, style of the, uh, buildings surrounding this area are, uh, either green and or craftsman-style architecture, uh, with the exception of the emotive buildings, such as the Carnegie Building. Um, it appears to me that, uh, and, and from my, my point of view, the architecture ought to either be compatible with the building that it's joined to, which is the, uh, Gothic revival style, or that it ought to blend with the neighborhood's style, which is predominantly either craftsman or green and, and style. And it, it seems that the architectural style of the building has, uh, been developed to mimic the Earl Pinder House, which is really, it's, uh, it's an aberration in this neighborhood. And I, I don't see any justification for using that as the basis for the design. So, uh, that's, that's my primary concern with this proposal. Bill Hawkins, Orion Hawkins, has been referred to, uh, at, uh, at least a couple of occasions as having been involved in this building design process, as an informant. Uh, I, well, personally worked with Bill Hawkins, and I understand his approach to looking at historic buildings, and I, I can't honestly see that he would endorse this proposed building design in this location. Uh, my, my personal point of view is this, this building would be appropriate if it were just a few blocks away, say on Seventh Avenue, and there are commercial buildings that have a similar characteristic to what's being proposed, and, uh, it, it would be fine in, in other parts of Oregon City. Uh, my concern is that in this particular location, it, uh, it misses an arc in terms of the architectural style, this, uh, this historic district.
Um, well, I'm not an architect, and I bow to those who are. I, I lived in it, and have for, for seventeen years, and, and I'm, it's a, it's a certainly an eclectic mix in this neighborhood. Uh, and, and we're looking, really, if you were, if we're talking about building it and add on a home, I, I would agree with some people. With the commercial building, um, maybe not so much. Well, I, 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 I think some things could change a little bit, I, I certainly, I, I think the windows maybe could be changed a little bit, make it more, uh, historically accurate, um, but, looking at it overall, I, I really think the building itself really does pretty well fit in. I've looked at it from my perspective, looking down at it as a neighborhood. I've looked at it from the perspective of furniture, and I looked at it from just driving around and thinking and looking at the picture and saying, well, what would I see as a visitor to see? And I, honestly, I felt that it would fit pretty well in this, like, neighborhood. Um, I don't, I, you're probably right, from an architectural standpoint, it may, it may not fit all those requirements, but from, from my non-educated view of that, I, I think it's fit okay in the neighborhood. I, I did, I, I think they've done a lot of positive things in trying to capture some of the, some of the, uh, architectural, pieces off many of the buildings. But, the thing that I don't particularly like is when you're looking at a, uh, a building, and you try to make it look too much like something else. Then, then I think you really lose it, and I think that one of that's phony, and I, and I, I think that really would take it out of the eclectic, and that would make it look like we're trying to be, um, something else, and that happens a lot on the East Coast that I've seen, and I, and it really looks phony to me, and, um, so, so I think it actually would fit very well in this, I can make a fucking part of this, in this neighborhood. Um, again, that's just my opinion, but I kinda also bow back to the Historic Review Board and their view of it, and Shippo's view of it, and we've got an eye for both of those, so I feel comfortable that it, that their belief is that it does fit in with the neighborhood for the most part. So, my thought.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Chair Powell, um, being, you know, a layperson, not an architect. Um, but it does seem to me that the architects in this case have been sensitive, uh, to, to the structure that's registered on National Register of Historic, of Historic Places, um, by creating that, uh, small impression where the breezeway attaches, by, uh, creating the setback, by, uh, articulating, um, the, the elevation of the building, the, um, the, the recesses and, and the, um, and the extensions out by changing its massing. Um, and I think that, that the, um, the subject of architecture and place itself is subjective, um, as, as we've seen, even among architects. And so, um, I, I think that, that, um, it would be frustrating for the applicant, um, to try to please everybody, because it can't be done. And I think what they've done, um, it has been to make an honest attempt at providing, uh, a, an architecturally integral design. Um, and they've been, um, been very good, I think, at listening to the public input and making accommodations to what they hear. And I agree with Pa- Chair Powell that, um, uh, not being an architect, you know, I rely on Shippo and our, our, our Historic Review Board, uh, for their analysis of this, so, I agree with Chair.
Not to say, not to say that we couldn't soften the landscaping, I mean, the sharp corners are sharp corners, like, if we agree with that, and we do have a lot of rounded corners in this neighborhood, so I think that's something with tree planting, the plan, if as landscape, uh, grown up, I think it would be a totally different look, but, um, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, um, yeah, my take on this, I too am an architect, uh, I'm not a planning commissioner, and my take on this, first of all, is the Historic Review Board and, and what they're tasked to do, and it's been a long, arduous process with them, and I greatly, uh, appreciate all their time and everything that they bring to the table, including their expertise, and so I rely a great deal on, on this body, on that body, to, to make the proper determination. We also heard testimony, uh, there's two ways to approach this kind of thing, yeah, they're trying to make it look exactly like the church, or the other way is, is that you make it look distinctly, and it has to be compatible with the church, but make it distinctly different. This new addition isn't a historic register piece, maybe this is a new addition in two thousand and, uh, probably eleven, it'll, it'll probably get built, which is very different, uh, um, and so I, I personally would like to see the distinction between the historic part of it and, um, and this new addition. And with that, the new addition, I, I really appreciate the new addition, um, what they've done is they've taken the major parts of the architecture that's there, there's a lot of pushing and pulling of this building, gives it lots of relief, and, and it's much taller, the, the sanctuary, but as it lost, as it moved over to this building, it still does the pushing and pulling, but it actually does it at a much smaller scale, I think it's, it's a, a perfect kind of solution for this. If I were to drive by, I could tell, uh, where the new part is, where the old part is, and I could also see that there's a real compatibility there, and that's where, that's where I'm at with it, um. I think the materials are appropriate, I, you know, the massing, as I said, is, is perfect. But, you know, just the hierarchy of buildings, the sanctuary will still be the prominent piece, and then off to the flanking side is this less dominant sort of structure, so, I can refer that, uh, uh, with you two, that, uh, I, I think that the, the solution is actually, um, a very crappy, um, a very movie kind of solution for this, I, I think it's really good for the, for the store part.
Okay, thank you.
Good thing, I agree with them, and specifically the HRBs and the city council have been used for those as well, so I'll leave it at that.
The only other, I guess the only comment I had was I I was a little concerned when I was surprised that the library moved in. And without much notice. And I was a little concerned about parking, that thing. And I don't I can't, I don't feel comfortable putting this back on the applicant to say, you know, you need to watch your parking issues. When the when the city moved in a library without, you know, too much involvement in the neighborhood. So I know that's a temporary issue and I don't think it's going to be a problem, I just I get concerned a little bit. Generally, library hours and and education church hours are 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 going to be far enough off that they won't be an issue. So I'm not terribly concerned about that. The only other concern I had, and I thought they did a very good job of that, was keeping the COVID windows available for the community to see. And I think you've done, the architect's done a good job. And I was a little concerned when I heard some folks talk about that, that it was going to be blocked and wouldn't be able to see it. But looking at it and standing down there and seeing it, I think it's going to be clear. Clearly, you're going to have to look around something anyway, but you have to do that today with a tree. So so I really don't see that that's going to be a problem. But that piece of historic churches is what I really wanted to make sure we had available and and they've done a good job of that. So overall, I'm pleased with what I've seen, I'm pleased with the response from the community. And and I think overall, it's a good good from a neighborhood perspective, I think it's a very good plan. And I think it will enhance the neighborhood greatly.
I love to bring another point up, conditional approval number one, planning commissioner required that no more than thirty-two participants in the preschool, attending, education building at one time. I think, you know, this, when the fire marshal walks into this building and he looks in the classroom, it'll be posted, so many so many people can be in here. And what it's telling, what the calculations turn out to be is fifteen people can be in each classroom. Times four, there's sixty, there's a potential of sixty kids being in four classrooms for whatever reason. And what we're saying here is only thirty-two. And so that that's a little, that doesn't feel feel right to me. If there's new ownership in the in the in the in the daycare and they've got some other feelings about expansion. They don't want to stay the same size, they would like to promote the program and get bigger, you know, how do you how do you deal with that? So just from a numerical number and square footage and parking, it makes me a little nervous. In conjunction with one of the off-street parking areas that's critical for this is the Pioneer Center Parking. And as we saw, this latest testimony that we just received in the last few days. You know, that parking lot is is allowed to be used by the church and it there's no, there's nothing written about it, it's just a handshake. What if that disappears, now we have more parking on the streets and creates more of a problem? Now, in conjunction with the which with the library, you know, now we really create, you know, this, now we're tripling up on the problem. So I feel like condition, for me, condition number one is actually pretty critical here. Of limiting the number of people that could be in the the classroom area. And it's because of parking, so it could get out of hand very quickly. And and the other part is is that I don't I don't know how we would, I don't know exactly how we would. When the when it gets posted that, you know, fifteen kids can be in this classroom and the fire marshal goes through. He he won't be able to trigger, hey, there's too many people, other than the fifteen. All he's looking is for is there's less than fifteen kids. So I'm not sure how it gets triggered that there's more than thirty-two people using the space. And so I I don't know what the mechanism there is to for us to always know that it's not being overused, I guess.
Well, if they're licensed for thirty-two. And we have to assume, we we have to assume that they're going, that's going to be controlled by the state.
But they don't, I I wouldn't limit, this doesn't limit their ability to be licensed for whatever the square footage allows. And that that's very explicit in in the laws, I understand, we have the same as who, we send in planning code or city code folks in there to to count kids. How do we enforce that? I think is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, exactly, it's not only, I guess, it's just more a practical matter about how one controls the future as with regard. I mean, growth is good, the church wants, I'm sure the church wants to grow. I I I would think that at some point, the daycare, I mean, growth is good, we don't want to go backwards, and growth is good. So if anything, more numbers will be, more people will be coming here.
Is it really fair to to put the the burden of any potential change on on this applicant? I mean, you don't know what changes would occur that could impact parking in that in that area. We just don't know.
Right, I mean, as it relates to the to the to the Carnegie, that this is this is brand new, this is.
Right.
Now, this is, but the other two items about a handshake on a parking lot to keep people off the street, you know, people off-street parking, so to speak. What if that's not in place?
Well, if that was not in place today, let's see, I I believe that, is it the case that that the the applicant still needs this parking requirement? By by having the two off-street plus nineteen on-street parking spaces?
That's fair.
And and that based on the square footage of the.
Of the new building.
New building. And and it just doesn't seem germane for this discussion to limit enrollment at a preschool. That is where we're deciding whether or not to accrue based upon the code. And the code says, you need this many parking spaces for this much square feet. It doesn't say, you need this many parking spaces for this many students in your class. So it doesn't make sense to me to put this cap on enrollment.
Then I would have to agree absolutely, it just seemed very strange condition to me for those reasons explicitly. As well as as how would you enforce that? And it's we certainly can compel them to withhold their application or, you know, only apply for less than what the building will allow. I guess the real question is if there is growth and that and that causes an influx of parking and and the parking problem. What are our abilities to take a look back at that, if at all? I mean, in the absence of some strange condition, in my opinion, it seems real strange condition about enrollment caps on preschool.
Yeah, if if there's growth in the congregation, the Sunday services, that would be evaluated separately. And that's not what we're doing here, what we're doing is looking at the preschool and midweek educational activities in the building. So what we've done is looked at occupancy lows, which was, we're not, we didn't evaluate the lobby. We said that we're not going to attach parking requirements for the lobby area because that's not generating parking. We're evaluating it based on the nursery, the preschool, and fourth classrooms. And that came out to seven or eight occupants or seats. And that means the, if the spaces provided, that means the cover. So sensibly, they cannot expand the building unless they expand parking, so.
And what we're trying to deal with a condition like that is is basically double up on, we already set conditions on the size. Now we're going to go back in and see what you also can do within within the space? I just wouldn't, I I don't agree with it.
I understand where the concern comes from with that condition. Because we've said, if we've got a finding that says one thing, and we've got a condition that sets another level, so.
Well, it seems like condition number one is disconnected from condition number two. Because we're talking about different times of use. So the preschool use is not happening concurrently with the education use on Sunday, which is the peak time. So I I would say, from my point of view, condition number one is really not necessary. Because that occupancy is not happening, the peak occupancy of the building occurs. The the condition that I I would support is number two. Because I can see that the education building and the basement of the church could potentially have the maximum occupancy at the same time. And so if there were no restriction on the basement, you could potentially have a double up of that space use. Which would double your, effectively double the parking load.
Can I ask, even if, let's say they didn't transfer all the space that they did. Right, from the basement. Is that thirty-eight hundred, thirty-nine hundred square feet, is that correct? With that thirty-nine hundred square feet, although then again, it gets weird, but would not the existing church, with whatever use they choose to use, with that square footage? Be in compliance with the parking standards as is, although they're not coming in, they're asked to change anything. So it it still seems a little awkward to condition. But just pretending that they were part of this application and we were adding, they they were doubling up, the worst-case scenario, they were all full. A worst-case from on end, but best case, say maybe from their perspective, how far out of line would they be from just code parking standards?
We'd have to, we'd have to say that they weren't expanding an unperformed situation. In order to be okay with it, you'd have to have some others in the record that showed how many spaces would normally be required for the church. And not making that, not evaluating that.
Well, let's see if we qualify this a little better. I mean, it sounds to me like one doesn't really make sense to anybody at this point, this other than, especially one outlet, leaving this side of itself. And I am, my my feeling is that, two, I think we should look at the the applicant's statement here in their file in their letter to us. And I think that would, that makes sense, using their recommendation.
The limitation on religious education.
Exactly, as opposed to the way we have it set up. I I think that makes sense. The applicant has agreed to, one, already, I mean, it it's here, it's within, it's in the, the notes in the history. So I have it on the record, and I see no point in changing that at this point. So, Dan, please.
Well, I I guess my my biggest issue is that is that the other parking lot that's being, if you don't get to park in that parking lot, then you get to park on the street. And does does that make a problem for the neighborhood, that's all?
Yeah.
What is a great problem to have? It is a great problem, you know, this is.
And and I guess if you were, I I guess if that was, if that parking lot was a critical piece of this. I would say, yeah, let's make that be number one and and say that if in fact it does expand, we need to have a contractual agreement with the city or whoever, I guess that is the city's parking lot. But I that I would go for, that would make sense. But I, as we see it here, this application doesn't require it at this point. So if hard to make look ten years from now and say, yes, it would. But, yeah, that's kind of my thought on it. As long as we're talking about these requirements, there was, the other one was the number five. And we want to drop that, the actual transformer has been removed.
That's correct.
And then we want to also drop, was it, was it four, the tree, the dogwood tree? Or that that's.
We've added a condition that requires that the dogwood, since they proposed saving, condition number eleven.
Okay. Oh, got it.
That the tree protection measures be in place prior to gradient destruction and they should remain in place prior to until certificate of occupancy. And that an arborist be present during any construction activities that might impact the roots of them.
Okay. So would you mind going over, was it these are accurate and was it even, was it not, just for the record?
Condition of approval number one, the applicant has stated that they're okay with that cap of thirty-two participants. As long as that is stated that they are preschool participants. Condition number two, that would be revised to state that the planning commission may require that the applicant agree to limit the use of the church basement to non-religious activities. Non-religious education activities such as storage uses. Right, condition number three will remain the same. Condition number four, revised tree planning stand, plan remains the same. Condition number five would be removed with respect to transformer pad screening. Condition number six remains with respect to window reflectivity requirements. Condition number seven remains, requiring a quadruped plan. Condition number eight remains, requiring that the street trees along Jefferson. And the trees that are planted onsite receive a restrictive covenant and various other requirements with respect to the final street view plan. Condition number nine remains the same, in compliance with engineering policies. Condition number ten, with respect to the ADA grants, remains. And finally, condition number eleven, these will be renumbered, so they'll be on the same conditions.
I guess I only have one other issue and I, while we're talking about conditions. I'm I'm a little concerned about the alley access and entrance with the fence that is there right now. And the and the lack of visibility with that street tree. I'm concerned that in the summer, we're going to have some difficulty seeing alley access out under Jefferson. I don't know what we've done with the signage, whether we could just think about there. I I'm not sure what it is, but I think that's something we need to talk about. I've been concerned about that as of late, watching the streets, but.
The the site, oh, the visibility triangle is prescribed in the code is in chapter ten. And it requires that you keep a clear, if you have a tree in in that clear vision triangle area, it's got to be trimmed up to eight feet. Or it's got to be removed, one of those things. With respect to any fences in that area, we can't be in the visibility triangle too. But that can be reviewed as separately. And or you can add a condition of approval saying compliance with, I think it's chapter ten point three two, clear vision triangle. Should be required prior to occupancy.
I would like to add that, I I think it's important, especially with the activity chosen.
Can you show me where?
Oh, sure. It's this access, it's this alley, right here, next to the big house.
Well, I don't have a problem with that.
I just, because I'm playing out most, I just, I think it's a good idea to do that.
Yeah, normally that provision is applied to intersecting streets rather than alleys.
Right.
But you can you can just make a more general condition of approval that site visibility at the alley.
Need to require this to go up.
Would need to require.
That's what I love to run. So you can, I'll be honest, that's what I love to, I'd like to add that as whatever, eleven or twelve, I guess it'd be twelve.
Would be condition of approval eleven.
It will be eleven.
With the renumber.
Okay, so, so I have anything else, not, well, motion?
I would move to approve the application as submitted by the applicant for conditional use one zero dash zero one and site plan one zero dash zero one. For the religious institution and with the new education building and preschool for Atkinson Memorial Church.
With the.
With the with the agreed upon revised conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tony? Oh.
Mr. Israel?
Aye.
Mr. Israel?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Aye.
Mr. Gruner?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good, thank you very much. We appreciate everybody coming and enjoying the process, which is like we do. We do very much appreciate you all being here and all giving us your comments. It's very important to us to help us make decisions that's good for the entire community, so thank you all very much. Do you have anything else on the agenda for admissions, proceedings? Okay, would you like to let her go or you would you like to, this is quick enough? All right, well, all right, thank you very much.
Uh, David first is um, we've been working with Public Works on the two thirteen drug handle project. Um, so they have submitted a land use application, some planning conditions will be seen for the natural resource overlay district. Um, I wanted to pass along that uh tomorrow night will be an open house here at City Hall from five to seven o'clock. Um, explaining the project and what they're working on and some of the phasing and timing, so that's open to the public. And planning commissioners are certainly welcome to um stop by if you'd like to uh to see what they've been working on so far.
Uh, but like I said, that will be coming to you in a in a public hearing um in in the near future. Uh, I think we finished the completeness review, so we'll be sending that out for public notice uh probably in the next week or two. There are a couple outstanding issues, but uh we would have those hopefully cleared up uh pretty quick.
I want to see how they go with their overnight. That's pretty cool.
Play the overnight?
It'll be cool.
They're having an open house for the drug handle too. I think that went out to the commission.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, on July seventh, um, the city commission will be hearing the historic review board to approve of Atkinson Church, the appeal, as you may recall, this appeal, it was remanded back to historic review board. They issued us another decision and that's going to appeal up to the historic review board again. So uh hopefully on July seventh, they will have a decision from the city commission concerning the historic review board application to Atkinson Church. On July thirteenth, um, the city commission will be having a a work session. And at that point, Scott Archer will be presenting a parking study once again to the commission for their consideration and recommendations for how to move forward. Um, and currently with that, we are, our public works department with Mr. Karchar is performing a circulation study for a potential to look at alternatives for circulation within downtown. Um, so right now, on July ninth, they'll be holding their first kind of get together to discuss and look at the area and and then they'll also be meeting on August fourth uh to kind of see what they can come back with after that first meeting in terms of options and possibilities for the downtown circulation study. So I think once the commission has had a chance at their work session to receive the information from Mr. Archer, I mean, we can either watch that online, attend that hearing, or we could even uh maybe get a memo from him and see if they'd be willing to come and speak at some later date on um that implementation of that parking study and any of the results of the circulation study as they're as they're working on them. Uh, the code updates, so we had our first reading of the proposed ordinance at the June sixteenth city commission hearing. Um, vast majority of the of the proposal that you commission approved um is moving forward. Uh, we did add, we realized when we were going through the geologic hazards section that we referenced a geologic hazards overlay map, which had never been uh created or adopted, so we did create a geologic hazards overlay map. Um, and that included using LiDAR data and the most up-to-date data that we had from Dagami. And what we did is we put a two-hundred-foot buffer around the toe and the slope of all historic landslides and identified landslides, and then a fifty-foot buffer around the toe and the slope of all slopes over twenty-five percent. So that uh upon the second reading will go into effect, so we will then at that point have a geologic hazards overlay map. Um, that LiDAR data, it's it's very accurate data, um, so I think we're we're in very good shape there. Uh, we've made a lot of improvements, not only on mapping abilities, but also the code uh for the geologic hazards. Uh, we're just, we've also added um noticing requirements to the Confederated Tribes of the Umatilla, Celeste, Grand Rod, Warm Springs, and Yakima Nation. Uh, so that was a change that hadn't been in front of the planning commission before, but that has been added. So we'll be taking on that that noticing uh pre-apps and applications as they come forward within the city.
All pre-apps or just pre-apps that are that are in a designated area? That's ridiculous. What was that? That's okay, I understand what they're doing.
We will also, we also amended uh the tree protection section of the code. We added uh minimum requirements for front yard landscaping.
The residential landscaping.
And the residential uh landscaping requirements. And then we also added some clarification so that you have a stand of trees on your property and we have a definition, we have a definition of diseased and hazardous trees. So we uh worked on that definition so that it was clear, but if you went in and you had a perfectly healthy stand of trees and you went in and put a rod in, and now because you've cut into that sand, you've created a fall, a wind blow hazard, that you can't count that 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 development that the property owner or the applicant is causing to take a healthy tree and make it hazardous. So there were some good, I think some good tweaks to the language in the mitigation program, uh mitigation plan requirements to address some of these, you know, I just, I I've got a building set, putting a house here, now this tree's five feet away, now it's a hazard, so I'm putting my house there. Uh, so that won't be a lot anymore, that would have to be mitigated as if 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 that were a healthy tree. Because you placed that lot there, you caused a hazard, not the other way around. So I think, you know, there were some.
Over the the front yard landscape?
We um, we we created a matrix that first started with if you have trees in your lot, you get credit for them and based on the size of your lot, there was a, you you needed to create, you needed to protect a minimum in caliber and diameter. And then we created a list of native trees and shade trees from the metro, metro list. And if you utilized, you protected one of those, you planted one of those, you actually got a bonus in the diameter. So um, we tried to create it and to incentivize it, but then also, you know, if you wanted to go in and clear cut it, here are the numbers. Um, so there was minimum requirements for trees we planted on the site plus a certain number of shrubs you planted based on the 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 length of the front of your house. So it's like, I think I'll stop my head, I think it was every four foot, there was a three gallon shrub required uh based on the linear uh square, linear length of the foundation of the home. So there are minimum requirements, I think, you know, in my opinion, most of the houses that you're seeing today are 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 going to exceed this already. I mean, a lot of, you're not, you, we don't see what we historically used to see, what when you had a house going in and dirt in the front yard. Um, I think throughout the years, you know, we may fall back to that, but just because of the 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 cost of the homes that are being built today, you usually see that landscaping going, and it's very rare anymore that we see a front yard without landscaping. But it's codified now and and uh hopefully it'll be exceeded. So hopefully we'll have the second reading of that and that would put that on July seventh, that would put it into effect on uh August sixth, those new code amendments. Uh, the code update, I'm not sure if you saw the last ever renewal uh meeting. We have an uh developers' agreement with um CCLC, Platinum Cove, in a partnership. Um, and one of the requirements was to complete phases one and two, which was the infrastructure component of the code development. Phase three was the two hundred and twenty apartment complexes. Um, Pacific Properties was working with Slayden Development, who's doing a lot of the work that you see, doing the work that you see out at Tri-City, to do the infrastructure improvements for phases one and two. Um, some of the lending requirements, understanding some of the lending requirement changes, they weren't able to secure bonds for that public infrastructure improvements. So then Slayden was also gonna construct the apartments and it included a takedown of the old Glacier site on June fifteenth of two thousand and ten, there was an outstanding, there was a payment due uh to complete that transaction and they missed that payment. So this was presented by uh Pacific Properties to the Urban Renewal Agency on on June sixteenth. Um, representatives from the partner, the property owners uh was was in attendance that night as well. Um, so at this point, um, we're we're reviewing the the development and working with both the property owner and the developer um to come up with a recommendation for how to move forward at this point. That being said, uh we did have some dates that we needed to meet in terms of land use decisions. Uh, so we've um provided a draft of the apartment site plan and designer view for the two hundred and twenty units uh to the applicant, we're um probably going to be issuing the notice of decision within the next day or two. On that, um meeting all of our obligations as a city to beat our timelines for land use decisions on certain components of that development. But at this time, um, we're still still working on how to get that project to the forest system. And uh as we get more information, if Urban Renewal makes decisions, I'll be happy to bring that back to you and keep you updated on where we're at. Um, library, went through a, for the Carnegie Building, um, we worked with um our library director on that application. It was a change in use, back to the original library use that was on the site, it's allowed as an institutionally zoned property. Um, they did meet with the the neighborhood association as required by code and it was a type-two decision that we did review, um, we posted the site. And there were, there were no exterior improvements to the site. And with that new language in the code that allows that, you can count that on-street parking. Um, you know, they've got pretty much two and a half sides, two and a half blocks to count for on-street parking. Um, and our code didn't have references or parking requirements for library uses, so we went out and looked at the region and we used some some pretty conservative numbers, uh in my opinion, uh for calculating the minimum and the maximum. We were really concerned about the minimum to make sure that we weren't just pushing this off on the neighborhood. And based on the square footage of the of that building, it's actually relatively small for a library. Um, they were able to meet their parking requirements, um, but.
How much is the goal this dedicated to number?
Up your head, Pete.
It's the upper floor, not not the.
Yeah, well, lower end of the floor.
Um, I would, I can give you that number. I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head. It's uh, the downstairs, I think, is the children's component and and the shelving upstairs. Um, and I think you uh may have seen an email, I have responses from uh almost all of you concerning the possibility of a planning commission meeting on August that would be kind of the, it would be the fifth Monday rather than the fourth Monday of the week. Um, what we're trying to do is Housing Authority of Clackamas County, um, they the the federal requirements, we're getting an application submitted, has been accelerated. And we're trying to work with them to meet this, um, they're a little bit behind. Trying to meet that deadline with it moving up the way, with the way it has. So in order to meet some of our minimum noticing requirements and to give us a chance to walk through what is potentially a very complicated and big application, we're looking for alternative forms to try and meet their needs as well as our needs. Um, I'll I'll leave that up up to this commission. I I've received from Commissioner Stein, Goran Leshwa that they would be available, Mr. Kidwell. Mr. Kidwell wouldn't be available, he's out of town, but he was interested in being a part of that process and hear back from.
I think, and you know, I'm.
Okay, all right. Uh, so I, you know, I'll leave that up to this commission, if they want to make that available or if we um the the problem is, I think that the first Monday in September, you run into Labor Day. Uh, so that really wasn't an option unless we just wanted to pick a completely different day of the week to meet um rather than a Monday. Um, which we would be available, we need to check, available in the meeting room, that's certainly open to.
Will they be planning more than one day?
More than one day?
I I, you know, I think that it's probably a I told them to plan on two, I I think it's probably gonna be a pretty, pretty big application. The good part is it's only a concept plant, they're not bringing in the detail plant at this point with all the detailed requirements for subdivision and any building components or whatnot. It's still, it's still a concept plant, so it's still big picture, but I'm not exactly sure what to expect, to be honest with you, um, whether we get through that in one night and a couple hours or if there's so much public testimony that we end up continuing it for bringing back some additional information, whatever questions they have that we need to address. So I did, in the in the in the planning, I have two meetings. And certainly, Mr. Mr. Kidwell, if you, you know, if you're, if you're not here for the thirtieth one, as long as you can watch in a line, you can sit or participate um at the second hearing, if there is one, that's the only part I'm not sure of.
All right, well, I mean, it makes sense to try before, but it have it available to them, if it works, it works, if it doesn't.
Um, with that.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Confirm the mission? All right then. Well, with that, then we are.